Good evening. The time is now 6:00 PM on Monday, April 1st, 2024. I call the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom. Members of the public can attend and participate by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Members of the board are in person tonight. I'm Joe Pato, the board chair. Sitting on my right is Vice Chair Susie Barry. On her right is Jill Hay. Sitting on my left is Doug Lucente, and on his left, Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff are Jim Malloy, Town Manager, Kelly Axtell, Deputy Town Manager. Also joining us remotely is Kim Katzenbach, the Select Board Executive Clerk. Tonight, we do not have public comment. We will move immediately to the consent agenda. We have three items on tonight's consent agenda. The first is an application for a one-day liquor license for the First Parish Church. The second is to approve a request for event signs on the Mineman Bike Way. And the third is to approve the Lexington Housing Assistance Board, LexHAD's, purchase of property at 50 Valley Field Street, which was previously voted during the executive session. Are there any items members wish to consider individually? Seeing none, I move the consent agenda items as submitted in the agenda packet.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous, five to zero. Brings us to our first item for individual consideration, which is the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Ms. Axtell, do you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to call attention to the amendment by Mr. Tom Scheiple that came in last evening, and I put it in the packet today and did send it to the board with the explanation of his amendment. So I just wanted to give the board a chance to discuss that. I did put in Mr. Kaufman's amendment, which Mr. Scheiple is proposing an amendment to that amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Axtell. And this is to Article 48, which is the short-term rental adjustments in the zoning bylaw. Colleagues, do you have any comments or questions? Mr. Kaufman is proposing to put the limit for gatherings to not exceed 10 persons, which is the limit for individuals staying in a short-term rental. And Mr. Scheiple, if Mr. Kaufman's amendment is adopted, he intends to amend that to increase that limit to 15 persons. Mr. Lucente.
I would like to hear what the planning board says about this before I make my decision. I want to hear their feedback with the proponents of the article.
Very reasonable. This won't be coming to town meeting this week. So we'll have an opportunity to gather more information. Also, in today's packet added today, Mr. Lucente had submitted some material on Article 46. Mr. Lucente?
Thank you, Mr. Pato. So as many of you may have read in watching Article 46 on the TMMA list, what I had originally assumed was going to be a pretty light article has turned into a pretty deep article. And with that, I thought, you know, we want to maybe consider pausing this article while we get some community feedback and try to find out. And again, just for those watching, this is for the Royal Family Invitation to the 250th Celebration. So I put together a statement where I'm going to be the individual from the board reading that. I thought I would craft a statement that sums up the reason for indefinite postponement. I'm happy to read it. I don't know if it's worth reading right now, or if everyone on the board has had an opportunity to read it since it was posted earlier today.
I read it.
Okay. So no sense in reading it. I plan to read it at town meeting, just so everyone knows what we're going after. And there will be a community meeting so that we can be specific and talk about invitations and what we're looking at. There were some interesting suggestions on the TMMA list, so it gives us an opportunity to sort of look at that and refocus some of our efforts on who we would invite. And secondly, I would request that we postpone our discussion of invitations that we have scheduled for Wednesday night. I would propose that we reschedule that for after town meeting dissolves, so that we have an opportunity to have a little bit more of a discussion rather than where it's, you know, always in crunch time for town meeting. And I think the board does need to have a discussion about that. And I would like to see that happen before the proposed June 12th meeting with the community, so that we can go into that meeting with some sense of where the board stands. And then possibly have one more meeting after the community meeting to discuss it. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Ms. Lucente. The only comment I'll make is currently it is on the agenda for Wednesday because we had to file the agenda for Wednesday's meeting before this one. So rather than following Mr. Lucente's request to remove the discussion on invitations, I left it there for this discussion, and we can remove it should the board choose. My only concern about delaying at least the beginning of a conversation is I understand other communities are already making invitations, and there is a fair amount of lead time that certain types of individuals need for invitations. Aside from that, I'm perfectly happy to have this conversation before we make any invitations. Ms. Hay?
So Ms. Barry and Mr. Lucente, I know you both are working with the other communities in the collective planning. Is it your recommendation in light of that information that this IP will not put us behind times?
So I, as Chair of the 250th Committee, I had advocated for us to have this discussion on Wednesday night. Prior to our next collaborative meeting with the four towns is Thursday night. However, we do have another one scheduled, June 6th, because we're now meeting every other month. So if we were to delay this conversation until after town meeting, assuming this can happen in May, I do not feel it will put us in an extremely adverse position in terms of invites. There are certain people that, you know, obviously we want to have on that list. But in terms of preparing for those people to come, those conversations started well over a year ago with our security group and with our local, regional, state, and federal partners. And those conversations will be ongoing, and those conversations will actually ramp up after the marathon in two weeks. So I don't think it will put us in an adverse position. And then, of course, you know, so I think, I think we'll be fine, is my sense. I did speak with the Vice Chair of the Conquer 250 the other night, so I think we'll be fine.
So just to confirm, the board is choosing to adjust the motion to be an indefinite postpone?
Yes, please.
I'm happy to support that. And Mr. Lucente, I would just note, so that you don't trip when you speak orally, the last line, it says, "is unanimously supports." You want to get rid of something in there.
This is what happens when you work on something at late, mid-length. So thank you for that pointing that out.
Very good. So just to confirm, I support it also. So there's five, five members of the board in support of changing it. Ms. Katzenbach, you can update our positions chart.
And then, Mr. Pato, on Wednesday night, we'll just bump that discussion.
Yes, so we will reschedule. We'll buy back time on Wednesday. It's been a very crowded calendar. A couple of things have evaporated, so Wednesday may actually be very light.
We had dinner?
Dinner would be nice. All right. I think that's it for town meeting. Ms. Axtell, oh, wait, Mr. Sandin had something.
So if I could discuss Article 33 for a second. Mr. Lucente and I had heard from some neighbors and met with at least one neighbor who expressed that the Select Board report, when the Select Board wrote the report saying that we would be adding to our requirements for an RFP, that there would be additional community engagement. And that Select Board report did not specifically mention neighbors. So some of the neighbors felt that that was a, might be interpreted as to exclude the neighbors. And so one of the things I wanted to bring to the Select Board was the potential to update our Select Board report. And if Ms. Katzenbach could bring up the Select Board report so we can see it with two words that say neighbors and when we're talking about doing community engagement. If Ms. Katzenbach could show that for us. Yeah, keep going down.
She just passed, she just passed, it's on the bottom of the first page.
There we go. There we go, there's a change bar. Might you be able to make it just a little larger, Kim? And so my feeling was that the entire reason for putting this in was that we were, the Select Board was intending to do additional engagement with neighbors. And so was hoping that the Select Board would be willing to explicitly make that explicit in our Select Board report.
Ms. Sandin, I think that, I certainly think the neighbors are part of our community. And as we were looking to engage the community, that included neighbors. But there was no harm in specifying that if that helps them feel that we are reaching out. Ms. Lucente? Ms. Lucente? Ms. Barry, you were first.
I was just going to say, if you're going to add neighbors and, do you need four more words before that would be engagement with but not limited to neighbors and historically? You can, you can lawyer it.
I was going to say, before you do, I was going to actually just suggest that the neighbors go in with the two public meetings, including, you know, outreach. I don't think we want to do this right now collaboratively, but I'm not sure that's the best place to put neighbors along with the historically excluded, underheard, and underserved communities. I'd rather have the neighbors along with the public and specifically identified as part of the public meetings. So we can perhaps work that in in the next, you know, 48 hours before we get to town meeting on Wednesday night. I don't object to including the neighbors, but I think the neighbors are part of the public. And I think that's an important distinction because the entire community is invited to participate in this.
Ms. Lucente?
So this article's fast approaching town meeting. And one of the concerns of the neighbors, at least as Mr. Sandin indicated, expressed by one of the neighbors who we met with, is that we haven't actually taken a formal stance as a board. There's been some consensus on ideas, but they wanted a sense that we were committed to this concept of the neighbors having an involvement in the RFP process or in the, what's that?
This isn't, it's not the RFP process.
In this review process that we're talking about, about the plans, because they, again, I'm expressing their concerns, but they feel that they have not been heard, and they want an opportunity to be heard. And they want the opportunity to have the Select Board stand behind that concept of them being heard. And they, while they heard our discussion, they didn't get a sense that we were committed to the neighbor interaction part.
So, so, Ms. Lucente, I'd be careful in how we word this, that all members of the Lexington community are being reached out to, and we will listen to everyone as we move through the process. That includes the neighbors.
Yes.
It absolutely includes the neighbors, but the neighbors are not a separate category.
If I could.
Sorry, there's another side over here. But anyway, I just wanted to say, Mr. Lucente, if I understood what you were saying correctly, if you could say it again, the neighbors want to be involved in the RFP process?
Sorry, they want to be involved in the review of the plans process. What if the plans are built?
Well, I would assume that would take place at a community meeting. Mr. Malloy, I'm incredibly concerned here. We're going down a slippery slope that could be precedent-setting and potentially tie the hands of future boards. Is that, is that an accurate read here if I'm understanding them?
Before Mr. Malloy answers, let me, let me clarify. So one of our experiences we had, for example, with the solar panels at the police station, right, there was, there was a feeling, and we heard at our table a lot, that the neighborhood that was directly abutting, those solar panels were not specifically engaged with. Okay? And we, in response to that, had several meetings with the neighbors to get more specific feedback. Did we have public outreach? Yes. Did we have public meetings? Yes. We didn't have the specific outreach to the neighbors. So yes, they are part of the community, not saying they're not part of the community. They're looking for some time to be able to give feedback as neighbors of that project. That's all I'm saying and all trying to advocate on their behalf.
Ms. Sandin? And I would suggest this is not just in the police station, but when we do schools, when we do community center, we specifically engage with neighbors to understand their concerns. And I'm suggesting that we continue exactly what we have been doing in the past going forward. So, so thank you.
Ms. Hay, and then Ms. Barry?
So my recommendation would be that in the last line of that paragraph, so "methods to encourage and gate historically excluded, underheard, and underserved communities, including at least two public meetings with targeted outreach to neighbors as they develop and refine designs for the site." Would that satisfy exactly where you're trying to go? So now we're just making sure that the public meetings will include the neighbors with a specific invitation. That would be, that would be my recommendation.
So one, I'm going to suggest we don't use the word targeted.
Fair enough. With specific.
And the second one, I just want to circle back to, I have never been against involving neighbors and advocating as hard as I can for them to be included. What my concern here is a process problem potentially and a policy problem. And I understand, you know, that particular area is having significant concerns. However, I am very concerned as we move this forward that we don't do something that is going to become either precedent-setting or put us in a precarious position with future projects down the road. That's all my question was to Mr. Malloy. And would it, I don't want to see us tie the hands of future boards or make the work any more difficult for any of the people involved and therefore become the new bar which we have to hit.
Could I, could I ask Ms. Hay a question? So I'm trying to write this down, including at least two public meetings. What, what comes after that?
I would say, well, duplicates the word include, but for the moment, I would say including at least two public meetings to include invitations to direct abutters, or we can put in the distance of abutters and neighbors.
To include?
To include.
At least two public meetings to include neighbors to develop and.
It's not just to include the neighbors, it's to include the invitation to the neighbors. That's, that's, it's notification, to include notification to neighbors, because that's where we have stumbled in the past. We have not always gotten that notification specifically. Whether they show up is up to them. That's not our obligation. The obligation we have is to make sure that they have the specific information. And that's why I would specify invitation or notification.
So let me, let me suggest that the final wordsmithing can be done offline. Mr. Sandin has the pen, because he has the pen for this particular item in any case. And we have the sense of the board that we want to make sure that these notifications are out.
Right. And I would like to just have the boards, my understanding of our last conversation on March 11th was an absolute 100% unanimous attempt of the board to involve outreach to the neighbors, which was one of the reasons that we were putting this clause in the RFP to begin with. So we could, I would just hope we could all say that, and then, and then it would be a consistent message to the town meeting.
Ms. Sandin, and also in the next paragraph down where it says, "in addition, the Select Board agreed to include the following preferences in the RFP." It specifically says sensitivity to neighborhood and adjacent properties. So now we've got that we're both including them as direct invitations to, to the meetings and that any project is going to have sensitivity to neighborhood and adjacent property.
Okay. All right, very good. So I'm going to close this item. Mr. Malloy, I think you were expecting a town manager's report or an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting.
Mr. Pato, just to clarify, are you closing the agenda item or just the topic of Article 33?
I was closing the agenda item because I forgot you had something, but I'll come right back to you. Let me deal with Mr. Malloy's item.
Yes, so we typically recognize our senior managers when they are first appointed. We have one senior manager who's played a key role in what we're doing right now, our town meeting and a lot of the tech that we have in this room, who was appointed and started during the pandemic, and he never got his lapel pin.
Oh, no.
So it's something that was overlooked, and we want to make that, we want to correct that error tonight. And so.
So I have the opportunity to hand Mr. Bissal's a genuine, not yet used pin, because I think the last time I had to give my pin away. But we really appreciate the work that staff have been doing and your contributions in particular. So if you would join us at the table, I will hand you the pin and and welcome you in person instead of virtually.
Although it's sort of a pro bono, right?
Thank you for keeping town meeting running.
And that clock is ticking. So Ms. Barrett?
So I just wanted to bring up Article 25. It is the first item on this evening's town meeting agenda. There's been a little bit of traffic about it on the TMMA Google group with some concerns raised. And it appears a group of people who want to vote against the article. So I'd just like to have a conversation with the board, see if we're still unanimous in our decision. Mr. Krung is in the room if there are any questions. Ms. Petit is here, Mr. Pincino is here, so they are all here. Should you have any questions regarding that article? There was also an email that Ms. Petit sent to me late this afternoon that Ms. Katzenbach sent you, probably as you were driving to get to this meeting. That's full of all kinds of lovely facts about pinemetals. So I guess, Mr. Malloy?
If I could, if I could add a couple of things too, because I've read some of the traffic on the website. I want to make it clear that in 1988, at the special town meeting in July, that when the town actually voted to purchase it, there were some conditions placed on the land. And the fourth condition item D says, "the land acquired here under shall continue to be used as municipal golf course, be available to the public during the winter months for cross-country skiing and other winter sports." And the other thing, because there was some thought that maybe we could put fields there, that I think somebody really needs to carefully look at the topographic map of the golf course, because the only flat area is a wet area. It's a marsh, and the rest of it is all hills and would not, well, it would make a challenging soccer force or soccer field. But I don't think that's the goal. I think soccer field is supposed to be pretty flat, and it's not possible to make that land flat. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware of those two things. And also point out that because of the fact that it was purchased for recreational uses, it probably has Article 97 protection. And we would need to find another 88 acres if we were to take it out and use for any other purpose then for recreational purposes or open space. So there's a couple of things there that when I read what was online today, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of those couple of issues.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. So colleagues, are there any second thoughts?
So, Mr. Pato, I just want to share, because this email came out late, for those in the audience and those who might watch, the kind of bullet points in the email are the comment regarding pesticides and chemicals. The course has and is required to have an IPM, an Integrated Pest Management Plan, which is followed and used as directed as needed by certified applicators. Additionally, all is approved by the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture Resources. There was a comment regarding the underground fuel tanks. There are two fuel tanks that are above ground. The appropriation for the replacement of those tanks has already been approved during annual town meeting this year. And here's an incredible number. So Ms. Petit, thank you so much for going to the Wayback Machine. From 2000 to 2023, 23 years of data, the course has generated $15,655,590 in profit. She did not have access to the information from 1992 to 1999. During fiscal '23, 46,965 rounds of golf were played, which represented about 14,471 rounds for residents. The recreation capital for equipment and course improvements are paid through the golf course each year, which at ATM 2024 was $110,000. And the course is open from approximately mid-March, it opened last week, to November annually and only during daylight hours. It's used by many residents who may not be golfers. They walk the course, walk their dogs. They also are a significant group of people that do bird watching and go out there looking for animals and wildlife.
Thank you. So again, anybody have second thoughts? Seeing none, we are unanimously in support.
Thank you.
It does bring us to the end of this item. Our next item is to discuss the work at the Battle Screen Streetscape Project. Mr. Lipsey?
Pato, I'll be recused on this item as my work is a direct abut to the project.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. So Mr. Lipsey, Town Engineer, will walk us through the recommendations.
All right, thank you. Here to give a project update from the meet, not a project update, but an update from the discussion we had a few months ago. And next slide, please. So the concerns that were discussed at the February 12th, 2024 Select Board meeting, I'll list it here. I'm going to run through them quickly. Can the Type A pedestrian level and the Type B street level lights that are in front of Number 9 Hancock Street be moved in or dimmed? Number two, can a Type A light in front of Number 1 Harrington Road be moved? Number three, can the rear side of the Type A lighting near Number 9 Hancock Street and Mason's Building be screened? Number four, can the detectable warning panels on the bike ramps be eliminated? Number five, can the crosswalk in the Hancock Street leg of the roundabout be eliminated? Number six, can the walkway from the visitor's center be better lined up with the Bedford Street crossing? Number seven, can the town support the fee, if not waived, for the HCC application for extending and painting the fence at 9 Hancock Street? And number eight, can the grass strip be added along the Bedford Street side of the battleground? To follow up on those concerns, so number one was if the Type A and Type B lights in front of 9 Hancock Street be moved in or dimmed? We would not recommend moving. The lighting will not be properly cast on the roadway if we move it, which is a safety concern, or the sidewalk. The Type A is specifically set next to the crosswalk, and the Type B is set for roadway lighting. And the significant infrastructure work in order to move those, you'd have to remove the sidewalk, curbing, install new conduit and pull boxes, pull the wire, remove and install new foundations, and then follow suit with removing and resetting of the granite and replacing of the concrete sidewalk. Dimming, however, is an option. In fact, we have a second meeting tomorrow with the supplier of lights, specifically on the dimming and on setting up different dimming options so we can go and field test it. And we have a follow-up meeting the following week. And after those meetings, we'll be going and testing at night some field dimming situations. So that's, that is pending. We expect to have all that tested out before the end of this month. Number two, can a Type A light in front of Number 1 Harrington Road be moved? Number two, can a type A light in front of number one Harrington Road be moved? Again, we don't recommend that because it's specifically there to cast at the crosswalk. And again, as I said before, it's significant infrastructure work in order to move those and it's not a simple move to do that. So there's a lot of time in cost and construction needed for that. Number three, can the rear side of the type A lighting near number nine Hancock Street and the Mason, Mason's Building be shielded? The answer is yes. When I was putting these slides together, the shield had been ordered. They've now arrived. I've already talked to the contractor. As soon as they get in with equipment that can reach the lights, we'll be putting, putting those shields on the rear side of the light, lights. We also may be ordering more. So if there's other areas that we need to be shielded, right now we have shilling for two. We're going to order some more so that there's other lights that people feel need to be shielded on the rear side. We'll be able to implement that quickly. Number four, can the detectable warning panels on the bike ramps be eliminated? There's significant state and federal guidance on that. Those cannot be eliminated. If those bike ramps are to be there, then the detectable, detectable warning panels must be there. I noted several of the guidance documents, both federal and state on this slide. Additionally, we met with the Bicycle Advisory Committee on the fourteenth of March and they reconfirmed their feeling that the ramps were necessary. Next slide. Can the crosswalk on the Hancock Street leg of the roundabout be eliminated? We do not recommend eliminating that. Eliminating that crosswalk lengthens the travel time for pedestrians. They're forcing them to go up to the bikeway crossing and which would be over a minute of additional walking time. I believe the calculation came up to like seventy-one seconds based on the standard walking time. It also decreases connectivity and accessibility, which is one of the goals specific to this project. It eliminates the protected island one lane crossing. It makes the crossing a full two lane crossing instead of crossing over to a protected island, cross one lane, then crossing over one more lane. We've met with the Commission on Disabilities on February twentieth as well as March nineteenth of this year. And they confirmed the, their preference to keep the crosswalk there. Additionally, the Bicycle Advisory Committee was asked on the fourteenth of March and they also voted to keep this crosswalk in that location. An alternative solution is we can, at number nine Hancock Street, install a walkway on the property. We can do one in the area or, or in the exact location of the existing walkway that goes from the driveway to the house. We could do it in a buried location. We could even do it directly behind the existing sidewalk, but it would, it would cause the need to move or remove the fence if it was in that location and I believe some plantings. But there's a variety of locations that, that could be placed and there's various options for material that could include destabilized crushed granite that we've used throughout the project. Could be concrete, could be done with brick, other options as well. Next slide, please. Number six, can the walkway from the visitor's center be lined up with the Bedford Street crossing? Yes, it can. And we will be adjusting that gravel path to better line up with the crossing this spring. Number seven, can the town support the fee if it's not waived for the HCC application for extending and painting the fence at number nine Hancock Street? The answer is yes. And I would add that if there was, if there was a desire to do that walkway in HCC, in HCC needing an application for that, we could do it for that as well. Any HCC applications that were related to this project. And can a grass strip be added along the Bedford Street side of the battleground? Originally, it didn't go in and the reason was maintenance concerns with the grass strip along there. But we'd be, we'd happily follow any guidance from the select board on whether they want a grass strip or not. We could certainly install one. And just as a reminder, at the November twenty-eighth meeting of two thousand twenty-two, the select board voted two in favor and two opposed with one recused on that specific item. So we'll take whatever direction the board gives us on that and and if it's two, put the grass strip in, that will be done this spring.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsy. So colleagues, we will also hear from Ms. McKenna who is here briefly. But are there any questions on what we've heard from Mr. Lipsky? Ms. Hay.
I guess I, I just had the one comment or question and you and I have discussed this, but it might concern about the, the bike ramp was not the detectable panels alone. It was the existence of the ramps themselves. And I know that the guidance that you provided, all the state and federal guidance, goes to the, it seems to go to the preservation of panels if you have the ramps. But is there something that requires us to have the ramps? As we've discussed, there are many other ways of navigating that and it does seem to just add, well, I won't keep going. Please tell me, are the ramps themselves required?
The ramps are not required. They're recommended, but not required. And they were requested by the Bicycle Advisory Committee. So you're correct. The slide was talking specifically that if they are in place, then the panel must be there.
Thank you.
Right. Since that item was raised, let me ask the board, is there a desire to adjust those ramps? Not on my part. Mr. Lipsy.
Honestly, the ramps are, they're confusing. I don't like the sharing the sidewalk with the bicycles. I and it's, it is difficult where everything's not finished yet to see how it's laid out and the painting and the road sort of shifts height-wise right now. I just feel like it's I'm, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of this ramp situation. So I'm not in favor of keeping it.
So I'm just saying, I assume you, since you raised this question, you're not.
I, I am not a fan of the ramps either. I think that they are confusing. And I think it also contributes to sort of the busyness of the, of what's happening. However, I do recognize that, A, we approved the plan. We didn't necessarily understand exactly what it was going to look like. And I do respect the Bicycle Advisory Committee. They are charged by us to advise us and that is their advice. But you know, if I were, no, I don't like them.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. So if I could just remind the board that the reasoning the Bicycle Advisory Committee wanted to see those was because they're thinking about young children who might not be comfortable navigating through the rotary, very busy intersection. And so we're thinking about the safety of children.
If I may, I, I, I absolutely think that that's key. As a parent of children who rode in that neighborhood, I would have not had my kids on that street to begin with. I would either have them coming up the bikeway behind or frankly, they would already be on the sidewalk that we're moving them into just a little bit further down because they would have come across a path. So I, I agree, we need to be, we need to be mindful of safety, but I don't think that this is necessarily the key to that safe route.
All right. So I just want to make two notes. One is there's been comments about the not wanting to direct bicycles there. And at one point, there was comments, I think by Ms. McKenna in her written statements and her verbal statements, that it's not legal there. However, that's true in the Center Business District, which ends at Marion Street. The portion of the sidewalk along the visitor's center and, and on Bedford Street is not excluded from bicycle use. The so we are two to two. This has already been paid for and there are enough funds to actually remove them. We, the board in future years, our future board could choose to reconsider, but I don't think we have a viable option here for any change. Next item.
Let's take the grass strip. I think I'm going to make that easy. I was one of the two that was opposed because I really thought it was just always going to look like a spraggly, underserved piece of grass. But seeing the way that the rest of the sides of the battleground lay out, I now feel that the, the dust, the crushed stone looks out of place. So I am going to switch from our being two to two to being three to one and support the grass.
And I will stay supporting the grass.
I will stay supporting the grass.
That's fine. And I understand that would be within budget, so not an issue. All right. Any other items that you want to ask or discuss? And then we'll hear from Ms. McKenna. All right. So Ms. McKenna, we'll have you for a few minutes.
Don McKenna, nine Hancock Street. So first I want to ask, I had sent Ms. Katzenbach a PowerPoint thing with a few quick slides and I wonder if she has them to put them up.
And Ms. Katzenbach, do you have access to that?
I, you give me a second to stop sharing. I have to open up my emails. She sent it after hours. So if you hold on, I'll stop sharing to get to my email.
And while we're waiting, I am going to defer item number four from our agenda tonight. And item number three, which is the review of the RFP, if we have a chance, we'll discuss, but I will move it from the consent agenda on Wednesday to item for full discussion on Wednesday. Right.
I'd like one minute on it if we can, just so that people, yeah.
Especially since that revised RFP only showed up this evening. Any brief comments today, but then we'll have a.
Right. But I would like to be able to vote it on the third.
All right. So we have Ms. McKenna's slides.
Thank you. And I'm not going to read this because I think you know most of the information in there. What I would like to do is point to the board. As you know, you're the stewards of the National Historic Landmarks and there's been some confusion. There are actually two national historic landmarks and they are highlighted in red. They abut each other and the connections between the two matter. And as you can see, the roundabout is right smack in the middle of them and impact our property. If you go to the next slide, as you know, my highest concern, you have worried about everybody's safety. And yes, this will require some additional work as will all the changes that we've asked for. However, I do want to say that I've been talking to Mr. Livesey and DPW about this since last summer when they started to put it in and we realized what the impacts were going to be. And they chose to continue to move forward and not wait for the board to make their decisions. So I think that you need to be sensitive to that fact as well. So in terms of this crosswalk, this is the crosswalk that for me, I traverse every day, multiple times a day, and it is a safety concern. We're worrying about everybody else's safety. We're worrying about the safety of children that I have not yet seen ride through the battleground area. We're worried about the safety of bicyclists that I've seen riding in the rotary, not on sidewalk. I've seen one. And all the time it's been up there actually ride on the sidewalks. So I'm asking you to eliminate that. And the alternative solution, I told Mr. Livesey and Mr. Pensano that we are not willing to degrade the property that we are tasked with preserving any further than it's already been degraded by putting some kind of walkway in there that isn't part of what should be there or that we have had because of changes that you all made. Next slide, please. The lighting proposals do not address the visual blight. No amount of dimming and no amount of shading is going to block me from having a blocked view to the battleground. We used to have a clear cut view from our property to the battleground and especially that flagpole. And as you can see, there's now a light pole blocking our view so that the flagpole is obstructed. The lights in my bedroom are at my eye level and none, none of that is going to change it. We've made some reasonable proposals to help keep that connection between those two national historic landmarks. And we're asking for some movement. And regarding the house, it's some, Mr. Livesey put down some of the concerns, but not all the concerns in terms of looking at the various properties and how their views are impacted, not just mine around the battleground and how people who are visitors, who are coming and taking pictures are not able to take that same picture without an obstruction of a big light pole in the middle of it. Next slide, please. Oh, I want to say one more thing that I missed about the lighting. I've heard multiple times about the lumens this and the lumens that, but I find it really difficult to understand why we can have a similar rotary, roundabout, whatever at Pleasant Street without all of that lighting. How we can have a similar one in front of Hancock, in front of Diamond School at Hancock Street. And we're not worried about all the lumens, but we are here in an area that we were supposed to have a dark sky streetscape for. So, so going back here, these are just some of the other ones that I particularly point out, the First Parish Church. Notice that there are two flagpoles now blocking. And if you look to the left of that picture, the existing light is there because a lot of these lights haven't been removed yet. If they simply moved one to that existing light, somebody can still take a picture. I took that picture from the battleground, looking at First Parish, which used to be an unobstructed view. Now it's not up near the Minuteman statue. I show you on the side there where three different materials are used right there. I had talked to Mr. Pensano about fixing those when they do that side of it. There's also the light up on the top left that was not part of the streetscape that got added in as part of the streetscape right in front of, or right next to the Liberty Ride site there and really right in front of what's going to be the Lexiher Memorial that shouldn't be there. So that's one that I have asked to be removed. And what I'll just end with, because I know you've heard a lot of what I've had to say before and time is short. As you know, for throughout my life, I have worked for the betterment of this town. And many times it's been to my personal detriment. And if I truly believe that the town was better off today with what this area looks like, I would not be standing here before you regardless. However, that's not what I believe. And I believe I've heard you just say tonight, Mr. Patter, I heard Mr. Malloy say at another point, we're going to reassess this. Well, there's no, nobody's reassessing. And I think, you know, the question is looking at this slide, has our objective been achieved? And this slide and the next two slides show that just Saturday at five thirty at night, there was traffic lined up in every direction here. That never happened before. If you want to show those next two slides, Kim, I'd appreciate it. See, you can see the slide all the way down Hancock Street. I've been on, down Bedford Street. It was all the way down Harrington Road. It was all the way down through the center as far as I could see. And then if you go to the last slide, please. Or I'm sorry, the one before that. So this is damage that's happening on an ongoing basis. I took these at various times. You can see somebody just recently ran right over the, the water spigot that I've also had asked be undergrounded. And you can see the marks there. And then if you go down to the next slide, this is a truck who clearly was too big to go over the apron. You can see his wheels in the middle section. So you're going to put some kind of plantings in there and then people are going to be riding through the middle of it. I've seen people ride straight from Lexington Center, up and over, straight through Bedford Street and vice versa. There was a problem with this setup. That being said, That being said, you know, I'm, I'm asking you to look at my 328 email and vote on every item that I listed there. And I want to say to each and every one of you personally, you, the four of you, are the only ones who have the authority and the responsibility to address these impacts. And, you know, anything we do is going to be more expensive if we have to do it later. Right now, this project is not finished. They have to come back in the spring. All of them told me, including John himself, that it would be much easier if we needed to make changes, we could do it because of that. And all of us know that the impacts of this project went way beyond anybody's good intentions and anybody's envisioning. And I'm looking for you and your leadership with your votes to make some modest changes that we've requested to make it better for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. K. So colleagues, how would you like to proceed? We have a draft motion in the packet to approve the staff recommendations. Are there any adjustments? I will note, I will note there are a few of the items that Ms. McKenna has placed in her email to us that are already included in what staff is planning to do. In particular, authorizing work with the HDC, paying for the various items associated and items that Ms. McKenna lists that have already been agreed with DPW. Is there anything else? Ms. Hey.
So I do have a question about the points that Ms. McKenna raised about the distinction in lighting the round, the, the lighting for this roundabout versus the other roundabouts in town. Can you just address that, Mr. Livesey, please?
I have to look at the Hancock Street Roundabout to familiarize myself with that one, but the Pleasant Street Roundabout does have existing lighting there, and Ross has evaluated what's there to ensure that there was enough lighting for a roundabout. So we feel comfortable with that one, with the lighting that is there. It's a different, it is a different, you know, situation with vehicular traffic versus pedestrian traffic than the situation, but we, we haven't taken a look at that. I don't remember to check with Ross to see if there was any additional cobra heads that were being added out there. I don't know off the top of my head. Speaking of Pleasant Street and Watertown Street. I'm not positive if there was additional cobra heads being added, but I know it was, it was recently evaluated.
Okay, I guess that, that, that really, I think, would be helpful to understand. I know the Hancock Street one does seem much dimmer at night, but it also is less, less streets. And none of them are a state route. So I understand the distinction there, but I would be interested in the feedback about the other.
Mr. Sandy.
So at a previous select board meeting, when we were discussing safety, one of my concerns that I raised was that this crosswalk discussion that we've been having about there's a potential safety issue that we've been discussing for Ms. McKenna. And I expressed concern, not only in the select board meeting, but after the select board meeting, town staff about ways that we might address that. My understanding is we have two proposals, Mr. Livesey, for addressing that particular safety issue at that crosswalk. One is a walkway, and another is to provide a flatter area of a sidewalk nearby. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
For the, for the ramp going to number nine Hancock Street that goes on the sidewalk?
With a crosswalk is, and, and then there's the dip down for the ADA accessible. You have two proposals for how to address the safety of, of Ms. McKenna's.
What we could do is a walkway of, you know, various material types from the driveway directly to the front door.
Right.
Or similar, well, it's still, would still be a walkway, but we could do one directly behind the existing, the existing walk, the existing sidewalk and marry up to that. But there are impacts with that. There is a fence that is in that location, and I believe, I believe plantings as well.
But, but my understanding is that you would be, the town staff would be willing to do either of those as a way to address the safety issue that Ms. McKenna has, has raised.
That's correct.
And you don't need to know tonight which one of those? Or do you need to know tonight?
I do not need to know tonight if it's, if it's one of those, because it doesn't affect the continuing construction of the project. It'd be good to know reasonably soon while we still have the contractor working, so we can, this would be, it would be best to do it with this contractor.
I would, I would certainly address, I would certainly support addressing with either one of those suggestions, whichever the Ms. McKenna and her husband would prefer.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, as, if Ms. McKenna decides she does want it, she can talk to us directly, too.
Don't. I, I want to make clear, that's not an acceptable solution. Because that really impacts our property.
So for the public, and then McKenna is saying, re-stating that this was an unacceptable solution to, to that.
And, and also, I express concern about the amount of intensity of lighting before, and, and my understanding is that you've taken several steps to address the intensity of the lighting. Am I understanding that correctly?
Hasn't physically been done, been done in the field yet, but they're working on several levels of programming, so we can test it in the field under different dimming levels when we go out there. So that's a work in progress. Yes, absolutely.
So, so those, those were the things I was hoping town staff would address.
Mr. Sandy, did you have a comment?
My point is, because the Ms. McKenna indicated not, not wanting the sidewalk abutting the existing sidewalk, it may quite was on the fence in the HDC, you know, would have to approve that. That seems like that's a, a bar that, you know, may not, may not get reached, but anyway, it doesn't sound like that's an option. You know, I think the, the crosswalk is a concern. It was a concern when I first saw it. It's continued concern for me based on the fact that we, I know it's further, but we're not talking a mile down the road. We're talking, I can throw a rock to it, and I'm not a good thrower, so it's right there. I, I can't see how that's, you know, that is so awful for people. And I, I believe that the crosswalk that's already there, or that exists to go across the bike path to cross Hancock is, that's necessary, because the bike path is there. We wouldn't want it to retract. I, I just think that crosswalk there is extraneous, in my, in my view, and it's, it's not serving a purpose that is so overwhelming. I mean, we have people that have to walk a very long distance to get to a crosswalk. This is, that is not the case of the intersection that we created there, so. So that's, that's my feelings on that.
So, so if I could.
We add on to the Commission on Disability, and we add on to the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I introduced these topics to both the Commission on Disability and the Bicycle Advisory Committee, telling them that I had concerns for the safety of Ms. McKenna. And that these were, and that both the Bicycle Advisory Committee and the Commission on Disability had more than one meeting on this, where Ms. McKenna was able to attend. And they recommended after a long discussion that these crosswalks be maintained.
And I, I appreciate their input and, and opinion. I'm, I'm just giving my, but an opinion that it's it seems very duplicative, in my view, just putting it out there, that that's my concern. By having seen it now live, I even feel even stronger that it's duplicative, but I, you know, I'm not against safety. I'm not against people being able to easily traverse through that area. I just think it's excessive, and
so I wish it wasn't that. I'm going to pose to the board, are there members of the board who would like to replace or remove that crossing? Yes. We have two members in favor. Anybody opposed? I am opposed. To oppose. It is no change to the existing plan. The so colleagues, I will put the motion on the, I will move the motion that is in our packet, which is to approve the actions recommended by Town Engineer and DPW Director in relation to the Battle Green Master Plan. Is there a second?
Mr. Patter, maybe we should separate these, considering we're not, there's not a consensus if we vote right now, the, we may end up being two to two, in which case we won't be voting on any changes.
If you were, tell me what you would like to remove.
I'd like to remove the crosswalk and the bike ramps.
All right, so the amended motion is the move to approve the recommendations of the Town Engineer and the DPW Direction, striking the recommendation on the crosswalk and the bicycle ramps. For a second.
Second. So I'm confused. What, what is the impact of?
We will come back to those other two items. First, we're going to take all the rest of the items.
And I believe we have, there was a question about the, the grass strip that we need to answer in there, that as part of your motion, we're taking the recommendations, including the recommendation to
The board can be unanimous in choosing to put grass.
As a grass strip.
Right.
So. Because that wasn't necessarily their recommendation. That's why I'm calling it out separately. It was a question to us in the, in the presentation.
Further amended, so as written, striking the items on the crosswalk and the bicycle ramp and replacing grass on the Bedford Street side of the battle green.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favors.
Sorry. May I just ask a clarifying question?
Mike, just clarifying question. So you're making no changes to what they're putting forward in terms of the light plan? Is that, everybody's in agreement with that?
There are no other changes to the motion on the table.
Okay, I just want to understand that.
Right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Is four zero unanimous. Okay, now I will move that a motion to remove the crosswalks and remove the bicycle ramps. So a single crosswalk that comes to number nine Hancock Street and the cross, the bicycle ramps. Is there a second on that?
To remove them?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
There are two ayes. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails.
And I think we just have asked several questions to Mr. Livesey that I would hope we will get response back about whether or not there is, in examining the lighting, anything that can be done to remove, reduce, moderate.
And I did have an additional question for Mr. Livesey, which was, we saw this picture of the 18-wheeler, and I was wondering if you had any thoughts about whether that is operating as indicated, or whether that requires some changes.
So we've had, we've seen dozens and dozens and dozens of 18-wheelers make it while we've been out there in the field. Sometimes the driver makes an error coming into it and may do something like that. But it absolutely can handle 18-wheelers.
So what, what, what is town staff's recommendation regarding the, the question about do, does any modifications need to be made?
The only modification that we are planning to make is if you're coming east on Bedford Street, taking a right onto Harrington Road.
East on?
And taking a right on east on, so if you're heading from, from Bedford towards Arlington up Bedford Street, and you're taking a right onto Harrington Road, the curving on the right-hand side, we're going to move that to, but up to the sidewalk, because school buses have trouble making their turn without riding up on, on that curving. So that's scheduled to be adjusted this spring.
Just to follow up on Mr. Sandy's comment or question about the 18-wheeler. Have we, have we seen an 18-wheeler come from Harrington to try to get to Bedford Street as if they were going to take a left onto Bedford? Because that's, I can see, and I have seen trucks go from the Minuteman statue toward, you know, Bedford successfully. And I've, I've seen not a huge truck, but a big enough truck come off Hancock and go. I, I haven't witnessed what we saw in the picture, which is something coming off of Harrington. Is, because that does seem like a different layout, size-wise and, and difficult. I, I guess the question is, have, have we experimented with that or seen that?
Off the top of my head, I can't remember for sure, but I'll check with the field crews, the field inspector, and my staff, who've been all the way involved, we know they have various times, to see if any of them recall seeing that particular movement.
I, I have personally witnessed the school bus situation you mentioned coming Bedford Street toward Harrington. And that, you know, we don't want, obviously, that situation, but, and, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Livesey.
So, and I'm looking at the picture that we were seeing. It looks to me like the truck is attempting to back up to sort of retry the turn, and I would just hope that we could figure out a, a design that's not going to require 18-wheelers, how, however, you know, that, that will reduce the probability of that occurring.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Mr. Malloy.
And I'll be very quickly, because I know we have a time constraint. There was a question about whether or not anybody has been reviewing this since it was installed, and I was expecting this earlier, and I didn't get it in time to put in the packet, but the police chief just forwarded me an email from David Bresnahan on the accident occurrences at that intersection for the five years prior to the rotary, or roundabout being installed and since the roundabout was installed. And so 2019, there were 18 accidents. In 2020, there were two. They note that that was a COVID year. 2021, there was 11. 2022, there was 19. In 2023, before the rotary was in, rotary roundabout was installed, there were six. And since the roundabout has been installed, there's been one accident. And so I'll include those numbers in my weekly update to the board, just so that you have the numbers.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Malloy, but I will note that since it's still under construction, I don't think until it's completed that we have fair comparisons.
I, I, I agree entirely. I would just say that's what we have right now, and I think once the paint markings are on the street, we'll probably even see better results.
All right. So I believe we have completed this item. We do need to get over to town meeting.
Excuse me, I just you didn't address any of the items that had to do with the rest of the battle green, so I assume at some point you're going to address those. Maybe not tonight, but.
No, Ms. McKenna, I asked the board if there were any, any items they wanted to raise. None were raised. We have completed the slide. The we will now just have a minute on the RFP.
So basically, I just wanted everybody to take a look. I've made some substantive changes. I've tried to incorporate everything that everybody mentioned last week. Any of you who sent in comments, Kim has incorporated. Mr. Malloy did an update to some of the factual parts about the community. Ideally, we would send any last comments to Kim tomorrow, so that on Wednesday, we could actually vote this. I'd love to actually pick up that extra week and get this out on the street, so that we do have a little more time to, you know, kickstart to the points that were raised last week, or whenever it was, I've lost track now, about how tight the turnaround is between our planning to interview the consulting firm and have them start work. And so there is a have them start work. And so there is a tag on a couple of the dates that are in there to say if we can actually issue this before the end of the week. This week I will back up the interview date and the submission deadline by a week so that we would have a little more time. So.
That makes for a sense. Thank you, Ms. Hay. So colleagues, please do send in comments on the, what's in the packet so that it will be before us on Wednesday.
So if what we're supposed to be commenting on is what we are, the proposed changes we're seeing and whether we support them or not, or what, what do we, I'm not quite sure.
If there's any other edits you think need to be made to this document, please send them to Ms. Katzenbach.
I don't have any other edits that I would like to see.
The draft is as edited, and if you, this is the draft we should be commenting on.
So I'm, do not expect anything from me because I'm fine.
I may have missed this, and my apologies, but the selection committee.
Yep.
We discussed the charge.
I have that also, but that has a slightly less critical timeframe. So there is another, that, no, there's a copy of that sitting in with Ms. Katzenbach as well. We can put that on another agenda. This is just to get this out on the street because it needs to go out for, you know, a little bit of time for people to then respond back.
Just wanted to make sure we were, I was prepared mentally for what we're doing Wednesday. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. So colleagues, given that I've pushed the other items, it brings us to adjournment. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is Wednesday, March to April 3rd at 6:00 PM in this room and via hybrid meeting. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. This is unanimous. We are adjourned. See you at town meeting.